Hello. It feels like it's been awhile. Okay. It is 6:03 PM on May 9th. This is the Monday regular board meeting for the Monroe School District. Present are all five directors, Director Campbell, Director Whitfield, Director Barnes, Director Johnson, and myself. We also have Acting Superintendent Kim Whitworth, Executive Staff, and members of our staff as well as members of the community. I want to welcome everyone to tonight's meeting. Welcome. Members of the public can log into the special board meeting using the Zoom link on the Board Docs website. Please rise for the Pledgeable Agents. Welcome to tonight's meeting. We are so happy to have you join us. All comments during tonight's meeting are audio recorded and will be available online and on our website. This is in addition to the written minutes. Please understand that while it may appear the board is moving quickly on important matters, there have been previous discussions on these issues, either in earlier meetings or in board workshops, which are also open public meetings. Each director has had ample time to study the issues, ask appropriate questions, and obtain satisfactory answers from the Acting Superintendent, her staff, or through outside research. Moving on to Agenda Item 1.04, Review of the Agenda, and we do have one update. We've moved one of the pieces from the Superintendent Consent Agenda, and it is now 5.03, the Consideration of Human Resources Report. Is there approval to approve the agenda as modified? Is there a motion? It is on. Okay. I move that the Monroe School Board of Directors approve the agenda as modified.
Second.
All in favor, raise your hand. Five to zero, Agenda is approved. Moving on to Agenda Item 2.01, Student Directors. We got Andrew.
Yeah, so for Sky Valley, it's been, I had a little bit of excitement at Sky Valley. We've been, I've been attending their ASP meetings and kind of trying to figure out what they, kind of what they're doing and hopefully, and trying to see if there's some way I can cooperate with them. And so through that, I've learned that the ASP is planning on doing a Montessori Community Garden, starting, I'm not exactly sure, fairly recently, I think. And they're also, of course, we also had our first Student Advisory Council meeting, and I was also present there, and that was pretty exciting. We, I think we had, Principal Barrett said we had 42 applicants in total, of which, I believe, little under 20 were selected. And, and there was also one verbal application as well. And so that went pretty well. Our first meeting was primarily just getting introduced, getting comfortable, and getting, kind of trying to determine what we wanted in our charter. And, and just kind of, one question they asked was just, you know, how do you want to feel at our meetings? And so different students said, comfortable, productive, welcome included, confident what we're doing, so on and so forth. And so that went pretty well, and hopefully we can kind of lay some of the, continue to lay some of the groundwork. And of course, state testing is this week, so class, a lot of classes have been canceled. And then, and then also for, on, I believe it's the 23rd, Sky Valley is doing spectacular, which many of you may already know of, but just basically a Sky Valley Talent Show. So they're pretty excited about that because they haven't done that for probably about two years now. So that's pretty exciting. So yeah, so a lot of things going on. We're really glad it's got value to be able to continue, just have the flexibility and freedom to keep planning new things and always seems to be something going on at Sky Valley. Thank you.
Thanks, Andrew. Directors, any questions? Are you excited to graduate soon?
Well, Sky Valley has the, because of the unique kind of situation they have, it's, they actually have the option to be a super senior, which is to, which you can return and just take as many classes as you want because you can continue to use them as a resource even after you have passed a team because you can take as many classes as you want, as few classes as you want. So one of my sisters was a super senior to be a teaching assistant, so that's something that I'm kind of looking at and hopefully, you know, there's still a lot of, a lot of things that, a lot of opportunities there that I haven't, I feel like I haven't taken full advantage of because it was COVID. And so, and so, because this was actually my first year on campus, taking a full load of classes. So, so I feel like there's a lot of, a lot of opportunities there that I haven't taken full advantage of. So including like ASP and stuff like that. So, so that's super seniors, one thing I've been looking at. But, but yeah, it is, it is kind of exciting that the year's, school year, it's kind of sad, but kind of exciting that a school year is coming to the end.
It's really neat that you have that option. I have to say, I'm, I'm a mom, Andrew. No matter what, I think you're a super senior.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right. Okay. Thank you, Andrew. Moving on to Agenda Item 2.02, Levy Conversation with DA Davidson. And we have, did I pitch it over to?
Good evening.
Hello. Hey Cory.
Good evening. Can you hear us? Okay.
Can you turn it up a little bit? Yeah.
Is that better, testing?
A little bit more?
Testing, testing. Can you hear us?
There we go. Yep.
Perfect. I'm not sure if Brenda needs to kind of set the stage or not. It'd be like John and I just get started.
You can go ahead and get started. Thanks Cory.
Mr. Gores.
Cory, you have a presentation. Are you able to share the screen?
I am. There it goes.
So the topic tonight is, is elections, and we, we like to think of ourselves as students of elections. One, because I do find it fascinating, which could give you, I guess, an insight into my personality. But secondly is, you know, a lot depends on our, on our, on our future. So we're very much into elections. And if you'll turn to the next slide, Cory, you'll see we've been tracking the Maintenance Operation Levy elections for quite some time. And what's interesting to note are the changes that have occurred over the last decade. If you look back, 2007, we passed the simple majority. So all of the elections then 2008 on were a simple majority. And you can see, we were in the high 90s, close to 100%. And then we had McCleary. And you can see that when McCleary took effect in 2019, we began to see a decline in voter support. McCleary may very well be one of the reasons, but there may be other reasons, and you may have ideas on those as well. But you can see districts are definitely struggling. In February of this year, we had 17 districts fail. And then in April, 11 of those reran and eight passed. So now we have three districts with double levy failures, but that's half of what we had in 2020. In 2020, we had six districts with double levy failures. So they certainly, things are looking better. On the next slide, this shows you where some of these are starting to occur. Where are we seeing these, these counties or school districts that are having the double levy failures? Historically, it has been Okanagan County and Lewis County. If we look at the double levy failures over the last 20 years, the majority have occurred in Okanagan County and in Lewis County. Now, we're seeing Okanagan County again, but we're also seeing it in different places down. You'll see in the Kennewick, Yakima, the Dry Cities area, we're seeing double levy failures. And so it's definitely, it's different this time. And Cory's done research on districts that have runs first attempts and second attempt. So Cory, if you want to share your research on the next slide.
Happy to. And before we do that, one thing that, you know, this, this map shows that this is a statewide issue, and you're not alone. I think last time we spoke, it was in February, right after the initial election. And now having April behind us, one thing that I want to point out is John showed that chart that showed it's been just harder and harder each year since McCleary was passed. And one thing to note, April's election averaged almost 53% yes. And over the last almost decade, we averaged 62% yes. So you can see, we're just at a different point in time with many, many factors kind of compounding on top of each other for school districts right now. But one thing that we did talk about in the February election was the difference between April, August, and November. And now we can kind of fine tune it to November. I know as the board looks forward to the month that they've chosen to submit it to the voters. And just a couple notes to revisit is, we see three different types of attempts in November. The first attempt, 20 out of 22 have passed in November. November's starting to be a month that's more statistically relevant than other months. And we're starting to notice that Novembers are a month where you get a lot of voter turnout, and that tends to be positive. And for school districts, the second attempts, nine of 10 in November. And I listed the districts down there that have tried these attempts. You could see there's some districts, large and small, and east and west. And it's been, it's a tough decision when to run that second attempt, knowing that's your second and final attempt to be able to receive those local resources for calendar year 2023, many which help extracurricular, extra class offerings, unfunded teachers. And then the third category, and I think this statistic drags the numbers down a little bit, is supplemental levies. And we didn't talk a lot about this back in February, but the November numbers would be a little bit better if the supplemental levies weren't included. Those are when the districts have a levy already approved, but there's a change in state law that allows them to ask for another levy on the top of the existing levy. And you can imagine, those are difficult to pass. So if we ignore the supplemental levies and look at second and first attempts, we're sitting right at 90% passage rate. One reminder that Brenda would like us to revisit with the board is, there's this new requirement that is in place for 2022. It was optional in the previous year, is that counties are required to print and distribute a local voter's pamphlet. And you are required to provide an explanatory statement prepared by the school districts, usually their bond attorney. And if you are also in charge of formally appointing those that would like to prepare arguments advocating for your levy, ballot measure, and those against your measure. So that's the new thing, is the school district board is now required to post a notice on the website and accept applications for those that would like to submit not only the pro statement, but the against statement. So just a quick reminder that that's something that should be top of radar. I know it might have came as something that was a surprise in the February election to many of our school districts, but nonetheless, it is still here and something we just wanted to kind of remind you about. But the dates are here in front of us for the November 8th election. The filing date is August 2nd. And one date to revisit is the, the approximate date that those ballots will be mailed. The county may send those out earlier than this date, but not later than October 21st. So that might be a date that there's some information shared either on district social media websites at the latest. I know the district's probably already preparing how to share this information on what the levy funds to its citizens. And then it would certify by November 29th. This one takes a lot longer to certify than many elections because it tends to be a big one. Whether it's sometimes it's midterms or presidential election, we have extra time built in to our November elections for certification. And Brenda really just wanted us to be here to see if there's any questions that we can answer as John and I experienced working with these levies across the state for our school districts.
Directors, are there any questions?
If there's a increase or significant increase in interest rates, does that have a bearing? Maybe more psychological, but have you talked about that or take that into account?
So we do a lot of analytics. We have election data dating back to the year 2000 and some data even further. And we've tracked inflation, like the Consumer Price Index. We've tracked recessions. Do recessions impact voters' opinions? And we come full circle to, to really one metric that stands out above the rest, and that would be gas prices. John Gores shared that with me when I first came on board and joined DA Davidson. And we continue that analysis, and that is a really strong output for how voters support school levies. Another factor has been assessed valuation. Assessed valuation leads voters to believe that if their home property values increased by 15%, that their tax rates and tax amounts will go up by 15%. And a lot of the times, that may not be true because in your school district, for example, you had $105 million in new construction last year. So think about how many new citizens or businesses have, are in the area to pay a share of the tax amount for the school district. So I think assessed valuation and gas prices have been the number one indicators we've seen when it comes to yes and no percentages, if that answers your question.
Yes, thank you.
Any other questions? Go ahead.
Is there any research or information about, it is, if there's an impact of running a levy and a bond at the same time, or having, planning for a future bond occurring at the same time as a levy is run? Is there any relationship between the two?
There is. John, do you mean to take this one?
Sure, please.
So we've tracked that election data since the year 2000 for capital levies and bonds. There's a very strong correlation between running a bond and an EPO. But even more so for a capital levy, a capital levy almost receives an 18% boost. And a bond is a little lesser, between seven and eight percent boost to the success rate of that bond. Bonds on average pass 43% of the time. It's almost a coin flip on the first attempt, and it puts it near to 50%. However, that trend has been difficult the last three years due to the other factors that are going on in our world. So sometimes we can track these trends for decades, and there's just certain periods of time in which certain trends are kind of thrown out the window while things are just kind of settling back down. But there is a correlation over the last two decades on bonds and EPOs run simultaneously. Some of our anecdotal evidence is that you're communicating two different things at one time and asking the voters to support them at once, rather than asking for a tax measure and then coming back another year where some people may not know the difference between those two and think, didn't you just ask for this? And so there is a correlation there. These bond measures are taking a little bit more time in this period. Traditionally, we see a 12 to 24 month ramp up period to do a full study and survey and analysis of the bond program and the possible tax package of the taxpayers.
Thank you. Any other questions, Directors? Anything else, Brenda?
I just wanted to thank Cory and John for taking the time to be here this evening. And I also wanted to let you know that there is a resolution on, in the business section to approve putting Proposition 1 back on the ballot on November 8th. And it is the same proposal that went to the voters in February with zero changes.
Okay. All right. Thank you so much, Brenda. Thank you, John, Cory, for being here tonight for presenting.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to Agenda Item 2.03, Teacher Appreciation Week Recognition. Hand it over to Ms. Whitworth.
Okay, I have a little bit to say, and then I'm going to ask our new Executive Director of HR, Dan Johnston, to say a few words. Robert Heinlein said, "When one teaches, to learn." And that is such an accurate statement and so important for people to understand. When you're a teacher, every day is different and every year is different. It doesn't matter who students are, where they come from, and what they believe. Public school teachers continue learning the best ways to reach each and every student. Thank you to all our teachers for continuing to be passionate learners. There will never be enough words to express our gratitude.
Mr. Johnston?
Thank you. It's an honor to be here and talk about our teachers. You know, I was reflecting on this, thinking about what I wanted to share and thinking about my own children's experience. And, you know, I think most of us have children in schools and thinking back to when my son, who's now in college, was in third grade. He came home with a writing assignment, and I told him what a nice job he'd done on his paper. And his response to me was, "Yeah, Dad, I'm a really good writer." And I said, "Well, good for you." And he said, "Yeah, my teacher told me. I'm a really good writer." So, but you know what? Today, he's in college and he's still a confident writer. And, and a lot's happened between then and now, and he's learned a lot and he's worked hard on it. But I still believe that that confidence came from that moment. And our teachers carry just tremendous power in their words. And I think most of us, if we reflect back on our lives, can think of a time or a teacher or, or several who made an impact on us and made us, brought us confidence, taught us something that stuck with us. Whether it was something social, emotional, or something academic like what I just shared. Teachers have tremendous power. They have a tremendous influence in our kids. It is, it is tiring work. It's rewarding work. Sometimes it's tiring and rewarding at the same time, but our teachers stick with it and they come back and they, whether it is strong academic lesson, where they're moving kids forward, whether it is understanding that a kid's down, that encouraging word, whether it's bringing that positive environment to a classroom that makes a kid want to come back for a whole nother year to a school. It's tremendous work. And so, so thank you, teachers. You're probably home and having dinner with your families, but if you're logged in and listening, thank you from all of us. We appreciate the work you do. We value it tremendously, both as a district and as a community. So thank you.
Thank you. Directors, anything to add?
Well, I'm going to go ahead and shout out our teachers. Shout out Ms. Hane. We love you over at Frylands. It's Kobe's teacher. Thank you for teaching him how to advocate for himself and being that such a positive thing. And for getting him to reading level, to grade level with reading. That's so important in third grade. And just for all the critical thinking skills that you have taught him. And shout out to Ms. Gillespie. Jada loves to read. That's like a big deal. So thank you for that. And then all eight teachers over with Little Michael at Hidden River. We appreciate you so much. But special shout out to Ms. Conrad for teaching him the right way. She's a COOG. So, right? Go COOGs. And we just, thank you to all the teachers. We appreciate you so very much. Thank you for giving and loving and showing up and doing all the good things for the students every day. And we, our family could, we're very, very lucky, very, very blessed to have the teachers that we do and to have the teachers that we do in this district. So thank you. Anything else?
Okay, so on that note, I need to give my appreciation to so many of the amazing teachers at Sky Valley who have impacted my life in profound ways as well as my children's lives in their teaching. Ms. Shawna, Ms. Joy Lynn, Ms. Amber Ortiz, Ms. Karen Ash, they're just the Neary Brothers, Dylan and Seamus. We have some truly amazing educators at Sky Valley that reach every single kid where they're at, and they think outside the box continually. And they're there not just to educate your student, but to walk alongside you as a parent and help you think outside the box to being your child's primary educator. And I just, I can't be more appreciative of the work that they do there. It's been life-changing in so many ways. And I am forever grateful for the teachers that show up there every day and continue to give and make a difference in the lives of the kids at Sky Valley. So thank you so much.
Go ahead.
I'll jump on. This is fun. So I will certainly thank our, the teachers who are part of our family's life. So Ms. Johnson, Ms. Tutangi, and Ms. Height. And I had to reschedule for Park Place. I'm looking forward to coming and seeing all of you, but I did get to participate in a teacher and staff appreciation at Maltby last week and got to be in and out of the classrooms. And it was so neat to learn about the relationship that our students and kids have with their teachers and how much they know about their teachers and the relationships that they share. It was, it was really cool. And I just thank all of you so much for the work that you do. Thanks.
Go ahead, Director Campbell.
Well, I would like to say thank you to all of the Park Place teachers who have survived Judith Campbell and your absolute incredible patience, because it takes a village. And I love that boy. And it does take a village because he's just like his dad. And I was a handful in middle school too. And, but just, I am so amazed, Directors, I think as we, as we get a lot of the challenges in our district that get put in front of us of the things that we need to address and deal with, and that's the nature of this, these roles. And so for me, when we get a chance to walk through our buildings and see what's happening in the classrooms, it is so invigorating and life-giving because we have incredible staff. We have very highly qualified teachers and and that's just encouraging. And so many that we haven't met yet personally, or we've met just briefly. But I'm really thankful, all my interactions with my kids' teachers. Ms. Fungoni at Frylands was like at the right hand of God, according to my daughter. And Ms. M., Ms. McMillan over at Chain Lake now is right there next to her, and they have just, we have not, we have just been blessed with amazing teachers for our kids especially. And those are, you know, the interactions that we get in our household and just like you guys do with your own kids. But we know that, you know, that's just a small sampling of the amazing teachers that we do have because there's a lot of awesome things going on in our classrooms. And thank you, guys, teachers who, I mean, it's May, and high school teachers. I know you're like, especially you AP teachers are like about ready to collapse because it's AP week, this week and next week. And it has been a race just to get this far this year. And so hang in there, guys, and breathe because AP season's almost done. And SBA season is happening in the middle school, which we had today in my school. And our children are about ready to collapse as well. And so hang in there, guys. The school year is coming to an end and just encourage everybody to finish strong. Because it's really great to start to feel like school is getting back to what it was pre-COVID. And that's a really good feeling. It's a really good feeling. Thank you, teachers.
Had an opportunity to visit, I think, almost every school and visit a lot of classrooms. And what I see with the teachers in the classes that I've visited is, have visited are professional, knowledgeable. The kids aren't, the kids are well behaved, which I always look, look for. And just very proud to be associated with this group of teachers in this school. And I want to just point out that if you have a little boy that is And I want to just point out that if you have a little boy that is rambunctious and can't keep his hands to himself or just wants to be the class clown or causing disruption, that was me. So, boys can turn out all right and make something of themselves. So, don't be disheartened. Keep the faith. Keep working. Thanks.
Thank you, directors. I do need to shout out, I'm sorry, but Ms. BP over at Frylands as well, because she's just a rock tour and she had all three of the bumpus babies. And we still, we just love her. We love her. Okay, moving on. Agenda Item 4.01, we have DEI Highlights. Ms. Kim Whitworth. So, we did do a, oh, sorry, audience comments. 3.01. Do we have any on? I have that one. Do we have any virtually? No? Okay. All right. Sorry, Beth. 3.01, Audience Comments. And we have Ms. Beth. Hey, Beth, and can I have you state your name and your relationship to the school district?
Just a moment, please. Sorry, these are not as pretty as I would have liked to have had, because I found out shortly before I was coming that I could not do a slide share. So, my name is Beth Nybert, and I am a member of this community with two generations of students at Monroe School District. I am a passionate individual for education in our children. And I'm here to speak tonight about the health curriculum. I want to mention in advance that I had a delightful 90-minute conversation with Niles, but I still felt I needed to bring some concerns to attention. I went through and I've captured out of just some page snaps out of either a teacher's guide or a student's textbook. I've made the specific link and the location as to which one I pulled these out of. The first image is health terms. This happens to be out of the middle school. Middle school curriculum covers sixth through eighth grade, I believe, is the criteria for those, because the elementary has K through five. So, there is, in here, there is an induction of some terminology that I find is, and I'm thankful that we don't have any small children in here tonight, in case I have to say something that I wouldn't normally say. Some terminology that I find is questionable from my level of comfort of what I would want to have be spoken to my child as a sixth grader, which I have a grandson who is a sixth grader this year. And some of these conversations are better for him to be having at home, starting with cisgender, asexual, bisexual. Now, heterosexual and homosexual are more scientifically defined. And I was looking up the criteria for education on this topic as well. Where's my time counter, please? Oh, there it is, way up there. Is that the information has to be scientific. Scientific is the criteria. So, I know that there's a focus on facts and how I'm applying them is focusing on facts and using a filter that may be unique to anybody who was on the committee. This isn't anything upfront to the committee. But when I get told that we have chosen to set forth the least offensive of the three that we're started with, that doesn't make me feel any better about this curriculum. Going to Slide number two. This is speaking about stereotyping. Sexual stereotyping is judging someone based on their sex assigned at birth. I find that terminology a little bit interesting, because multiple locations in the education, it talks about assigned at birth. No, it's not assigned, like it's a flip of a coin or somebody guessed at it. No, it's based on their visible genitalia coming out of the womb and how they're born. And so, gender identity or perceived sexual orientation. So, I could walk up to a perfect stranger and out of respect, I might say to someone in the peril, like this person at the end of this table, I might say, "It's a pleasure to meet you, sir," and I would be sexual stereotyping. A child coming into, and this happens to be also from middle school, but the same language was available in the elementary school curriculum. The fact that a child who is quite confident in who they are, what their gender is and their sexuality, might be perceiving that, oh, my gosh, we enter a level of confusion that shouldn't be going into. Now, we have Exhibit number three. I'm sorry, the words are extremely small, but we've got some additional health labels there concerning sexuality and words that, to be honest, I don't find are necessary in a health program. Turning to Display number four and Display number five is they are making reference to a body with a vagina. Nowhere in the entire curriculum is that associated with the term female. That is the scientific definition. And anytime that you sway from science, you're introducing a level of confusion that shouldn't be had in a science class. So, that covers four and five. Same thing. A body with a penis is not referred anywhere as a male. Those are my ads to point out the fact of what's missing on both of those for Display six and seven. And then on Display number seven, I really think it's an individual's private matter as to whether they are circumcised or not yet. We have to go into the definitions and the information about all of that as well in this curriculum for middle school. I'm going to skip over Slide number eight in the interest of time and skip to Slide number seven. Here, we're talking about a conversation about what are some ways your body is changing. And we introduce this interesting statement. "If students' names change is connected to sexual development, be sure to acknowledge and validate these as normal." No, friends, that is not normal. Individuals sometimes are negatively influenced. They have, they're born with a gender. And then, unfortunately, I know of a young woman who is 20 years struggling with her identity, because she was sexually molested by a same-sex individual. So, following that, because our bodies tend to respond normally and naturally without understanding at a young, ripe age of nine or 10 years old, we have a condition now that, oh, maybe I'm not a girl, when physically she is. And so, now for 20 years, she's been continuing to struggle in that, working on her healing because of that one situation. Just because something happens to cause us to be confused or changed doesn't mean it's wrong for that person. However, in a moment, a teacher could simply say, "Oh, it's all normal." No, friends, that's where that student should be offered an opportunity to have a dialogue with their parents and/or a counselor with the approval of a parent. And then Slide number 10. This is where we're getting into the stereotyping again. Offer that for your information. And what is not included in there, and I highly encourage, because there is an unclear delineation between sexuality, sexual, gender, and sex throughout all of the curriculum. And I did not have time, I would not have time to present on behalf of all of the parents that I've listed on my sheet, in addition to the Monroe chapter of the Washington Parents Alliance that are concerned about the truth being shared. And I want to reference, which I didn't give you a copy of, a Rasmussen poll that was taken at the end of last year, where 1,000 US-American adults were surveyed. And the margin of error is about 3%, but nearly three in four American adults believe there are only two genders. That poll found that 63% strongly agreed that there are only two genders. And a whopping 68% said schools and teachers should not be allowed to counsel students on their sexual or gender identities without parental knowledge or consent. Throughout the curriculum, I'm seeing more counseling around that topic and less around the biology associated with how the body is created or how it properly functions. And I found disturbing is that there are six pages, sorry, six lessons associated with stress and mental health in an elementary school curriculum for a fourth grader. Once again, we're introducing topics in a school condition when we should be focusing on academia, like reading, writing, math, science, biology, of course, but not social sciences until you get up into high school and you want to take a specific class. Thank you for your time. I really respect this board and the honor, the opportunity that I'm able to speak tonight.
Thank you, Beth. Do we have any other public comments, audience comments? Thank you for your public comments. We would like to remind everyone that the purpose of the school board meetings is for the board to conduct its business in public. Therefore, we do not respond to remarks made during the public comment section of our meetings. These public comments are personal opinions shared by community members and are not censored by the board or staff. As such, comments made by community members may not be in alignment with board policies or with the values and beliefs of the Monroe School District. Again, we thank our community members for participating in our meeting this evening. Moving on to Agenda Item 4.01, DEI Highlights.
So, the mission of public education is to provide every single child, regardless of who they are and where they come from, a free quality learning experience that prepares them for post-secondary education and life. Decades ago, we started looking at data to determine who we were successfully educating and who we were not. When we were not being successful, we asked ourselves why and tried to identify and mitigate barriers to education. We looked at academic outcomes, discipline, attendance, mental health, and climate and culture data. We determined that we have gaps in education for students based on their gender, race, and ethnicity, on income, identity, ability, and linguistic ability. And we continue to look at ways to mitigate the disproportionality in outcomes. If we're talking about poverty, the Monroe School District's percentage of students who qualify for free and reduced lunch is about 36%. So, 36% of our students fall beneath the poverty level here in our district. We know that students who are living in poverty may have stress in their lives, because their parents may not be able to find a job or might have to work multiple jobs to make ends meet. They may experience food insecurity. We do what we can to provide students access to meals, reduced fees for activities and class fees, counseling support for stress, and transportation and other supports if they are homeless. This is part of our DEI work. Gender. And I'm going to remember this one, because I remember being in high school and taking my first drafting class. I was so excited. I wanted to be an architect. One other girl in my class, teacher was male, all the other boys. And we were not exactly taken seriously. It was a very interesting experience for me. So, there was a strong push in the 80s, 90s, and 2000s around gender representation in the fields of science, technology, engineering, and mathematics. Karen Rosenkranz at Sky Valley identified gaps in who signed up for STEM classes and specifically for tech classes. And she noticed that there were definitely fewer girls than boys signing up for these classes. She started an initiative to increase the number of girls taking tech classes. And that's something that she continues to monitor and encourage and look for different ways by talking with them, by counseling, to get them involved as much as possible. Gender identity is another piece that we look at when we're talking about diversity, equity, and inclusion. Our Healthy Youth Survey data clearly indicates that students who identify as lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, intersex, asexual, and all people who are members of the community experience higher rates of depression and thoughts of suicide than their peers. According to Medical News Today, this is due to oppression and discrimination they may encounter at school, at home, and in their wider community. Race and ethnicity. There have been and continue to be gaps in education achievement between white and non-Asian minority students. Some of the reasons for this are opportunities and access due to funding, teacher quality, curriculum, and class size. To mitigate these inequities, we look at how we are funding schools and programs, where we staff our most qualified and experienced teachers, and how we encourage students to take rigorous coursework and support them when they do so. We have also been learning about how our beliefs in children impact our expectations on what they can do and how well they do in school. This is also part of our DEI work. Ability. At one point in our educational history, we did not include students with disabilities in the general education setting. It wasn't until 1975 that the Education for All Handicapped Children Act required that school districts identify students with disabilities and provide them with a free and appropriate public education in the least restrictive environment. The work of inclusion that all of our schools are engaged in today provides professional development for staff, so that they're able to teach a wide range of learners in classrooms. Hidden River has been a partner with the University of Washington to learn and implement inclusionary practices. And this is work that we continue to share with our other schools and we grow. This is also part of our diversity, equity, and inclusion work. There are a couple of new updates since the last time I was able to share with you and our department came and talked. There is an Appendix O in the Monroe Education Association Collective Bargaining Agreement that we became aware of just recently. And we were actually quite embarrassed and very upset that we didn't realize this was there, because it meant that we were leaving our labor partners out of very important work that we were doing for our DEI committee. So, the Joint District and Association Equity Committee are charged with collaborating to develop a shared vision for implementing specific steps designed to promote equity for marginalized communities. We will fulfill this commitment by partnering with our labor partners to develop the framework for our diversity, equity, and inclusion work. We are so appreciative of this opportunity to collaborate. We know that we are stronger together. Park Place also has some additional work that they have been doing that I wanted to make sure that I shared with you today. Principal Hilson and the staff at Park Place Middle School will be working with Vincent Perez and the Equity Institute for the rest of this year. Vincent has worked in our community quite a bit over the years. He's done a lot of work at Monroe High School and working with students and helping them to learn to advocate for themselves and to learn the systems of education. The outcomes for the work that they're going to be doing would be to, let's see, she said, "See a decrease in incidents such as fights and gender and racial slurs. Provide opportunities and spaces for racial healing to take place at the school. And to look for programming that includes in-person activities, because it has the greatest impact." And Kristi has talked a lot about bringing in some of the human connection back to the schools. We know that there have been a lot of questions about discipline lately. So, I want to make sure that the community knows that May 23, our board meeting, we're going to have the Monroe School District Behavior Interventions Team come to discuss the work that they have been doing with discipline. This also includes some of the DEI work that we're doing as we look at student behaviors and how we respond. So, with that, that's the latest updates and highlights that we have. And please let me know if you have any questions.
Kim, one of the things I appreciate about your update is how comprehensive that it is. I think that there is a mindset that DEI work is very narrow in what that is, but how broad. but how broad and it affects everyone. And so I appreciate, I appreciate the updates and what's going on. We know obviously that we have a lot of work to do in the Monroe School District. Every district does, and there's a lot that's been going on, especially in the last couple of years. And it's just exacerbated a lot of issues that were already in places. But I appreciate how broad you have given this perspective of it's not a small task. And it affects many, many different areas. And so thank you for that. I appreciate it. And looking forward to seeing as we continue in the many facets that this encompasses. Thank you.
I appreciate the updates too. And it's always exciting to hear about the work that's being done. For my, through my work, I had the opportunity this last week to attend a two-day webinar put on by Jobs for the Future. It was called Getting Serious: Apprenticeship Equity Solutions for Employers and Sponsors. And it had to do with incorporating DEIA into organizations. So this is diversity, equity, inclusion, and accessibility. And I really appreciated having that extra letter given some status. And I think it would be, as it, as it comes up in the reports that we're getting and the work that we're doing, I think it would be a great thing for Monroe School District to adopt that language. I think a lot of what I learned about for that and for my work aligns with what is happening in Monroe School District. And I think we have some amazing opportunities for our students. I know we've already got access to career programs and apprenticeships or putting students on those pathways. And this webinar really talked about how do we open up those pathways to more people? And how do we ensure that there's representation? That was one of the biggest things they, they focused on was representation at the top, that it really has to be an organizational effort and something that we're all putting time and energy into. And I see that happening here and I appreciate it. Well, thank you so much.
And we have two more letters that we're going to add as well, and that's cultural competency. But I just didn't feel like I should throw that out without a longer explanation. We have lots of letters.
Any other questions, comments? Thank you, Kim, for that presentation, for being so thorough with all of that. And for everyone who has been working on all of these pieces and all of those programs and the work there with DEI. So thank you so much. I, it brings me a lot of joy to know that our students are supported and encouraged and equipped. And that the work isn't ever done, but we are still, you know, progressing. So I'm working hard. So thank you. Moving on to agenda item 5.01, consideration of health curriculum. Is there a motion?
I move that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approve the health curriculum.
Is there a second?
Second.
There is a motion and a second that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approve the health curriculum. Discussion?
Okay, so I have a couple of questions, some things that kind of jumped out to me. First question was, were we ever able to provide another opportunity for our Hispanic community to get the information that they needed since the first webinar translation didn't work?
Niall, are you available to answer that question or you want me to give it a try? I see you're here.
Yeah, thank you, Kim. I'm here. Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Perfect. Thank you. Yeah. So to answer that question specifically, we went back after the last board meeting and reconnected with our communications department just to make sure that the Spanish translation was actually good on our last meeting. And when we did that first webinar, we found that the audio was good. And that's posted on our website right now under the direct, the advisement from Carlos, who is our Hispanic liaison. We've got it posted via YouTube with Spanish captions right now. We're kind of actually waiting for tonight's discussion before we do any more community meetings and webinars. I didn't want to put out to the community something and then have to come back a week later if the board chooses not to move forward with this and say, hey, sorry, we gave information that isn't accurate. So the plan is if things pass tonight, we kind of go into phase two of community awareness. So we most definitely will do a Spanish language meeting at Park Place Middle School. It's my plan to do it right now in their commons space as well as partnering with any other community organizations like YMCA or Boys and Girls Club that want to host things at their sites as well.
Okay. And did we get anything out to the community to let them know that that was posted on YouTube, specifically the Hispanic community, so that they could go and find it and listen to it?
We did. We sent information out through our communications department that that's posted. It's hosted on our website, but it's just posted through YouTube so that we can provide translations in multiple different languages.
Okay. My second question is, on the website, it has the ability to ask questions of the committee. My question is, what questions were sent into the committee to be answered? I kind of want to know what the feel for the community is as far as what, what did they like about the curriculum? What did they not like about the curriculum? I feel like as a board member, that's going to help me make a more informed decision to know what the feedback is from the community.
Yeah, we actually had very few responses through that form. Two of them were actually from the same person. We had three responses, two from the same individual. One of the questions was what freedom or flexibility do teachers have to deviate from the content contained within the curriculum? The second one was about how the curriculum meets the requirements for people with protected classes under RCW 4960 as well as the Comprehensive Sex Ed RCW. And then there was a question around how references to the lessons, which are titled, "The Body with a Vagina and the Body with a Penis", how that may not be in alignment with somebody, with that person's belief around gender identification. And then the last question was around how families can opt their kids out of certain parts of the curriculum. That, that question said, some of the questions, some of the content is good, but others contain information that they didn't want their child to see or attempt. Specifically to answer that last question, that's something that I think we're going to need to continue to work through as a district. Our current opt-out form has two options for families to opt out as is kind of designed in the law. One is the HIV/AIDS instruction. The other is comprehensive sexual health education lessons. We've had a few different requests now about can we make that more nuanced or more fine-grained opt-out, right? Can families opt out from one lesson or not another? I think that's something that we need to continue to work through and discuss. There's a lot of logistics with that, as well as teachers being able to set up safe environments for kids to be able to consistently talk about topics that may be sensitive in nature to some kids. But I, it's something that I'm definitely open to exploring.
Okay. So another one, just to fellow directors, I guess it's kind of helpful that this is here. But slide 21, where it says at the bottom that sexual stereotyping comes from fear, prejudice, or misunderstanding. I personally find it, it's a little bit troublesome that in this we lead with fear or prejudice when we're talking about kids. We're not assuming best intent. We're not teaching kids how to communicate. We're telling them this person mislabeled you or stereotyped you. It comes from fear or prejudice. Like, that's the first place that you need to go to, assume worst intent that this person had. When, these are kids that we're talking about. A lot of the time, they don't understand, you know, what this is. And but yet here we're telling them fear, prejudice, or misunderstanding, you know? And that comes at the bottom. Why aren't we not leading with, it can come from misunderstanding. Let's assume best intent and let's communicate first and foremost. And then if it's not, then let's address it further. So I find in this slide that that part kind of rubs me the wrong way when we're talking about kids, especially in middle school. I mean, that's my, you know, 11-year-old son next year. He'll be 12. And, you know, I feel like there has to be some grace there. And I just feel like the wording specifically in that towards the end doesn't really allow for that. And I feel like it's setting the stage to tell people, hey, assume it's fear or prejudice first and foremost before anything else. So that's one, one thing that I don't like. Another thing that is a hard pill for me to swallow is when we talk about putting boys together and girls together or bodies with penises and bodies with vaginas together to sit there and talk about their body parts when you have 10 and 11-year-old kids. I can't imagine, I mean, myself at that age, there's no way I would have sat in a room next to a boy or someone who had a penis to learn about getting my period for the first time, you know, or doing that. It's, it's one of those where it can kind of be an embarrassing topic for some. And so I want to make sure that when we're talking about being inclusive and making sure that we don't want to alienate people, can we just say, if you have a penis, you're going to go in this group and you're going to learn about the body part that you have. You don't need to include female, male in there to make people feel uncomfortable or make them pick a gender. It's just a, this is the body part that you currently have, that you were born with. We just want you to learn how your body functions, right? Scientific. Same with if your body has a vagina, we're going to put you over in this group so that you can learn about it. I know that OSPI says that it's best practice, but honestly, as a mom and knowing how little kids function and just remembering how I was at that age, I can't, I can't swallow that and say, it's okay, we're just going to stick them together and you're going to learn about this next to a boy while he sits there and learns about, you know, wet dreams and getting, you know, erections and those sorts of things. Like, I can't just, that to me doesn't sit well. So I can't, I can't condone that as a board member and sitting on instructional materials committee. So my question further is, are there things that we can pick and choose out of this curriculum? Can we adjust these things so that like, hey, you can use this slide, but we're going to, you know, cross out this part. This is not a part that we want, you know, teachers to use. Can we delete it from there? Can we, you know, go back to separating girls and boys? Can we take this and approve certain parts of it and amend what it is that we don't like? If it's something that we all agree upon to make sure that we're, you know, still being sensitive to everyone in the community and trying to meet the needs of everyone, right? Because that was the whole goal of, you know, part of this curriculum was to do that. And I feel like in putting boys and girls together and things like this where we lead with fear and prejudice, we're just not doing that. If we want to talk about bringing the community together too, in terms of, you know, fear and prejudice, we have to start assuming best intent when we lead with things and stop trying to teach little kids to come from that place of worst intent first and foremost. So I don't know, that's just sort of my, my diatribe. I want, I want so much for division to, to stop and for people to come together. And I just, I feel like we have to represent that in the things that we're presenting to our kids as well because they are impressionable and they are moldable. And I, words matter. They're important. So I don't know, thoughts? Anybody else?
I'm in agreement with Director Barnes. I believe the board should have some input and some direction for the way the curriculum is presented. And we're the final say for, we are the representatives of the community. And we also take responsibility for our decision. And I believe that the board should have input in what is presented and what's included and what should be excluded. Well, Director Barnes, as the Structural Materials Committee representative, what is your, what's your recommendation?
I, I would hope that maybe as directors, we could go and have a workshop to look at this a little bit more intensively and sort of decide together things that we, you know, think, hey, we agree with this and we want this to be in here, but you know, maybe not this. I think that there needs to be some fine tuning. There's a lot that I like about this curriculum. I love the fact that it can be, you know, integrated with Canvas. I love the fact that we are making it easier to opt out. I love the fact that we're being transparent and we put it out there for the community so far in advance for everybody to look over. There are a lot of things, I think, that are done well. I just feel like nothing's perfect. But I want to try to fine-tooth comb it so that it represents our community better and that it does the best that it can for our students.
Niall?
I'm here.
Hey, Niall, how different is this from what we currently have?
I don't feel like it's actually significantly different from, it is more updated definitely from Flash. Speaking specifically to what Director Barnes had referenced, the lesson around sexual stereotyping is actually kind of building on gender stereotyping. So we currently have a lesson at the elementary level around gender stereotypes. And this ETR curriculum also has a lesson around gender roles and gender stereotyping. In other words, what, right, when we say, hey, boys play with trucks and girls play with dolls. Well, does playing with trucks mean that you're a boy? Couldn't a boy not play with a doll or a girl not play with a truck, right? So there are, there is currently a lesson around gender roles. And there is also a lesson around gender roles at the elementary level in ETR. Puberty starts in, currently in fourth grade. And ETR is also taught in fourth grade. HIV/AIDS is required by the state to be taught, starting in grade five, which is what ETR also does. And then, you know, to fifth grade talks about anatomy and physiology as it does currently. And then middle school lessons go into more so pregnancy prevention and other more age-appropriate items. Condom demonstration is currently in eighth grade and in ETR HealthSmart is also an eighth grade content. I feel like it is, you know, if we could do a comparison topic by topic, but it is actually quite similar to what we currently have. We actually have ETR materials in our middle school right now. They're from 2002, I believe. They may be 2004, actually, now that I say that. But we have purchased and used ETR materials in our schools right now. So it's not a new provider to us. And then one of the things that was mentioned around the gender separation, that was something that our, our committee, our advisory committee wrestled with on multiple different meetings of should we keep it as is? Right now, our current practice is in fifth grade to separate instruction by gender, right? As defined currently, boys and girls. We wrestled with that as an advisory committee over multiple different meetings. And the only change in that, that is proposed would be that fifth graders, right? Currently, our sixth graders receive instruction in a coeducational setting, which we would move forward with. So the change that's proposed right now is just the fifth grade students. So President Bumpus, to answer your question, you know, bluntly, I feel like it is fairly similar with some adjustments and some updates. Kind of, you know, and the big change on that is the Flash materials, which is the base of our teaching materials right now are aging. And the Pearson materials at the high school are 2014. And then the Glencoe materials at the middle school level, I believe, are 2013. So similar, but updated.
Thank you, Niall. Directors, do you have any other questions?
This type of curriculum is going to have a long-term effect and direction for the school. It was, the components that are included were legislated. And OSPI interpreted that legislation and put it in terms of what they would like to see with something like this coming to the board. We get the, the top level and after all the recommendations are made. And we don't, we are not part of the discussions and the, the information that's being presented. So I would like to have a chance to at least talk among the board members about the, the topic. I'm not prepared to. I don't have my notes prepared in depth. I don't have my notes prepared in depth for a discussion. Uh, I think we should take a little time and discuss this as a board. I'd like to move to lay this on the table of five point zero one for, for the discussion.
The point of order, I think we can move to lay it on the table until we either choose to vote or approve that. So we would have to either vote no and then do that, or I think we would have to vote yes and then move on. I'm not sure if according to our procedure procedures, we can choose to move on during, when we're in the middle of discussing. Because we've motioned and seconded. Am I wrong? Can I respond to that, Chuck?
Sure.
Four of us have kids in this district, so it's not like we're not invested in this. And um, we have concerns that are brought to us and this isn't just like picking math. This is, this has more ramifications and more controversy that surround it, and I don't like that it does, but it's the reality. And I think that the concerns that we get, we're going to get concerns no matter what we choose and what we do. We are not going to make everybody happy. It's not possible because we're a very diverse school district with diverse opinions around a lot of this. And no matter what we choose to do, we're not going to make everybody happy. And I don't know, and this is putting my teacher hat on. I get, and my, Niall and I had this conversation in instructional, in the, not instructional materials committee, but the um, the community committee when I was on that. When you begin to slice and dice a curriculum, it becomes very dangerous because you create holes in it. Teachers are not curriculum writers. Teachers are practitioners. And there's a research-based process behind why a curriculum has a scope and sequence to it. So I get nervous about saying, let's take this curriculum and turn it into Swiss cheese and put a bunch of holes in it. Because there are aspects of it that some or all of us may or may not be comfortable with. And so I get really nervous about doing that, about any curriculum. Whereas a dad putting that hat on, if there's an issue that I personally feel uncomfortable with my kids, with my seventh grader, with my second grader that I have, that's where I really appreciate that the legislation is said. It, it's actually putting more rights into parents' hands of saying, I really don't feel comfortable that a teacher is going to talk to my kids about this. I know that's difficult because not all of our parents in our community have these conversations with their kids. Especially culturally, there are some where this conversation is extremely taboo. And that's unfortunate because ignorance creates some pre-long-lasting ramifications, especially when it's around health sex education. Um, but my gut reaction to this and my, and my background in with curriculum of having to go through and choosing curriculum is when, when we as a board or as, or as you had have teachers sitting here saying, we're just going to slice and dice and pick and choose, it becomes very dangerous because it, you, you begin to pull apart the scope and sequence of what it can do. Where the concerns that we're having, I think, are more concerns that are based on a personal level with a lot of families, and that's more of a personal choice that families can make. And so that's kind of where I'm feeling on this is, um, we've taken a year to, to discuss this and go over this. And we've come to this curriculum. Uh, and it's not perfect and there isn't one. Otherwise, everybody chooses it. Uh, and so for us to sit there and say, okay, we have this curriculum and now let's go ahead and take a knife to it. We limit a lot of things and our parents have the options to do that when they feel that. So, it's not an easy situation, but that's kind of where I'm seeing a lot of this, looking at it both from a dad and a teacher.
Any other questions, comments? We're still in discussion.
I'll add my two cents. Um, my, uh, in seeing this item on the agenda, my biggest question was, does it satisfy the law? If we approve this curriculum, uh, will Monroe School District be upholding the law of the state of Washington? And I was told that yes, it does. Um, so that, that helped my, me with my biggest uh, question about it. I also think in reviewing some of the curriculum and, and in some of the conversation that has happened tonight um, and some of the updates we've received about when uh, the curriculum will be available in Spanish and that type of thing, that it is accessible to as many people as possible, right? It, for all of our students, for our teachers, it supports learning. And, and I think that that is a good thing. I think when, um, to what Director Campbell is saying, when we start having some people decide what gets taken out and what gets left in, it gets problematic. I think when we start separating out groups of students or groups of learners, it becomes less inclusive. And so I think um, ensuring that our community knows their ability to opt out. And, and I think, as um, Niall was speaking about, I would be interested in learning more about parents having more flexibility, families having more flexibility about what lessons their students attend. I think that's a really good way for us as a board to support our community and, and their different needs. So I would be open to that. But in terms of um, removing parts of the curriculum or changing uh, the way that the curriculum is set forth and, and set up to be presented by our educators, um, I think we have a good product. I, I believe in the process that we've gone through for a year. Um, and that's where I'm at with it.
I guess one of the concerns too, just when we talk about giving people ample time, I don't think that part of me just feels like maybe the members from our Hispanic community didn't get as much time to review because it wasn't brought to our attention until a bit after the webinar had already taken place. And I just want to make sure that we're really hearing every voice in the community and not leaving anybody out. Um, so I mean, that would be my only other, like, maybe give another week or two for them to be able to chime in or, you know, wait until we had another, another event at Park Place where they could come in in person and actually physically ask their questions and get answers to them. So, I don't know.
Our committee that was, that I got to serve on, we had, Niall, correct me wrong, I think in four or five members of the Hispanic community.
Four.
Four. Um, and we had a really large and diverse group of community members that were on there. Um, and I don't know that adding two more weeks at this point, this is something that's been going on since. Now, our first meeting was in September.
I believe it was October seventh, I believe.
October. So here we are in May. I don't know that adding two more weeks is going to create anything that hasn't already come up. And there was a lot of concerns and a lot of questions that were brought up from the, from the Hispanic community specifically. We actually had quite a few discussions um, around that. And so, I mean, we could ask that, but we've, we've literally fleeced this to our community as, as broadly and as long as possible. And at this point, if we don't have anything that has come significantly beyond from that community, I don't know that there is. I, I am a little disappointed that the curriculum is taking longer for the parent materials to get there. I think some of it is promises of, they're saying, yeah, it's gonna be ready. And then they have their fingers crossed behind their back of their team getting it actually ready. Um, I really wish that it would be for the moment of implementation ahead of time, especially, that's an important thing. But the state has a deadline that we really don't have. What I do like about this, with, as far as our, our Hispanic community, which is our largest um, linguistic minority in our community, that this material, this curriculum has more to offer families than anything else. I, I mean, it's not even a close comparison. Uh, and so for me, that is one thing that is extremely important. So as we move through that, uh, that's, that's a big deal. That's a really big deal than a lot of the other materials. And one of the biggest concerns that was brought up with Hispanic community is culturally, this is a very taboo issue that's not talked about. So giving resources into parents' hands to help them and encourage families to actually have conversations and have that conversation within the cultural uh, value lens that you have is a huge deal. It's not just saying, we're gonna teach your kid, this is what this is and this is how you should think. This is, we want you to have conversations with your family about this. And here's some resources to help prompt you in that. That was a big deal for me. Because this is helping families who don't necessarily always have those tools because they were not given those tools. Um, and so this is the school district saying, hey, we want to help you. Just say, hey, start that conversation within your own cultural lens. And as we continue to grow more diverse, I think that that's a really important thing because um, health and sexual education is viewed very differently in different cultures. And so to have those families maintain their cultural values and religious values as well and encouraging the conversation is something that the other curriculums did not push as much.
Niall, what's the deadline that a decision has to be made by that's legislated?
Uh, we have to tell the state by, I believe it is September of twenty twenty-two. Um, and I, I, I could be wrong on that, Director Whitfield. I'll have to get back to you with the, after I double check that. Um, the other deadline that is non-imposed is purchasing inventorying, distributing to schools as well as training teachers. And so we have to get all of that done so that our teachers, specifically at the high school and middle school where they have eighth grade and ninth grade health classes, so that they're ready to teach by the start of school. The rest of our grade levels typically don't teach these lessons until uh, towards the end of the semester or in all honesty, most cases, the end of the year. Um, but it's true, there's eighth and ninth grade comprehensive classes that we need to get training for earlier.
Well, O S P I, talking about best practices, have kept our kids out of school, have had reduced learning, have led to depression. They have not allowed kids to be out in fields playing and exercising. Our buildings have been empty. So I have as much faith in O S P I as as I have in, I don't want to say, I wouldn't say they're incompetent, but maybe a step or two above that. So, also the what you talked about with gaining public information and discussions, I know nothing about. I don't know if there was criticisms or I don't, I haven't been educated about certain topics or been involved in discussions. As far as I'm concerned, we could wait, you guys can work on it all summer and we can get it approved by the deadline. That's where I'm at.
Just want to add, I think we've said really good things up here. Um, I have a middle schooler. I have an, he's eleven, he's going to be twelve this week. And he's come home and had lots of questions this past year. We've done a lot of learning. Um, and I'm really glad that he felt comfortable enough to ask me all the questions. But this isn't something that he was learning inside of classrooms. This is something that kids are talking about. They, they talk, they share. There's TikTok, Snapchat, Instagram, Facebook, other things I don't even probably know about and I'm still learning. Um, but Roblox, didn't even know there was a chat feature. There's a chat feature, check it. Um, so I just think there's a lot of misinformation as well, especially in the hands of an eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen-year-old. And these are some, I don't, I don't know how, in our home, we like to clarify pieces that we have questions around. Um, but not everyone has that at home where they can have those conversations at home with parents or guardians. And so I just feel like that's a way to support some of our students who maybe don't have access to that information because these conversations are happening whether or not we want them to. Whether or not I feel like talking about some of these things, I'm gonna talk about it with my eleven-year-old and we're gonna sit there and have very factual conversations. Um, and I was, thank you, Niall. I was able to schedule a visit with him and sit there for like, I think, almost two hours. And he was super patient and explained this to me a few months ago and he's been uh, consistent in providing us a lot of information and making himself available to meet with any of us or any of the community members. So I thank you, Niall, for all the work you've done. Uh, and Jeremiah for sitting on that community board. And Molly for also being a part of that learning process. Um, and so I just think we've had lots of opportunities here to have this discussion. That was my piece.
Well, I disagree uh, that we haven't had the discussions. Again, as a board director, when information is presented to us, there's, we get it right at this point. There's been discussions, there's been information, there's been things presented, there's been ideas talked about, going back and forth. And we're presented with something and it's, here, the government says it's the right thing. Niall's with, for each grade or let's say K through three or I believe it's fifth and then middle school and then high school, each, each section for each grade has, uh, I can't remember if it was twenty, twenty sections, some of that effect. Are kids, are parents able to have their children up out of a particular lesson? Or do they have to completely opt out of sex ed?
Yeah, that's a great question, uh, Director Whitfield. So that's, currently, we have opt-out for H I V AIDS instruction, which is in fifth grade, I think it is, it is one lesson. And then, uh, or so H I V AIDS and then or uh, the sexual health instruction, which out of the E T R curriculum, that is three lessons, I believe, in fifth grade. Maybe it's four. Um, so E T R is a comprehensive health curriculum, so it includes a lot more than just sex ed. Uh, so it includes lessons that actually overlap with our social and emotional learning uh, around uh, bullying and bystander awareness, uh, risk-taking and goal-setting. Uh, and many other, you know, areas. Um, it aligns to the C D C's, what's called the HE CAT. It is the um, it's, it is a framework for uh, effective health education and Health Smart fully aligns to the HE CAT in addition to meeting state requirements. Um, but specifically to answer your question, Director Whitfield, it is H I V AIDS or sexual health education right now. I'm, I, like I said earlier, I'm more than willing to investigate that more. Uh, if we get very, very minutia lesson by lesson, it becomes a very um, interesting logistical problem to solve around supervision of kids and kids in and out of classrooms, especially at secondary levels where some of those teachers have a hundred and twenty students in a day. Um, but I am open to investigating that more.
It just seems that opting out of the entire curriculum, sex ed is, it's, it's all or nothing. And I think there's only certain sections that uh, parents might object to. And you know, I was on the structural, the I, I M C committee. And we talked about sexual health curriculum. And the curriculum we were covering was sex ed. I mean, reproductive, S T Ds, and we had uh, the H training. The social emotional, I'm not sure of. I, I know that we have a social emotional curriculum, but I don't know the extent of that, how that overlaps with this. And just to say, there's, there is a lot of good information. I reviewed it uh, quite, quite thoroughly, and there is a lot of good information about other than sex ed, this, this is, I'd say this is maybe forty percent sex ed and sixty percent behavior and healthy lifestyle. So it is quite different than what we had for basic, basic sex ed. So again, having a curriculum that is such a significant change from what we had, I just think we should have a conversation among the board. It's it's difficult right at this meeting to get into that in depth. That's why I'd like to just wait. And as I said, you can work on the thing all stinking summer, as far as I'm concerned. You know, I work three sixty-five, other than a couple of weeks vacation, so working on it during the summer, I'm not opposed to that.
I was looking at our email and we got our logins for, to look at the ETR in March, so we've had them for about two months. Now, we narrowed it in on ETR right after the beginning of the year. He had a rubric that we use to look at grading the curriculums based on different components from the state and from our uh, what our, what our community uh, board was looking at uh, as far as what is our community values. And again, I'm sitting here thinking, we've been doing this for a year, Niall's made himself more than available, give us multiple presentations. And I feel like we're at a point of saying, we haven't asked the question now, why didn't we ask it several months ago?
Any further discussion? There's a motion.
I just want to say, I appreciate you bringing forward all this stuff from the committee. That's what all the people within our community need to hear, that's what the parents need to hear. They need to know how the process went, that many people were there, that there was that diverse community that was represented. I think so many times, a lot of that gets lost in the shuffle. And so I think it's just a good reminder for the community to know the process of how this was brought about. Um, we do as parents have so much power in the form of being able to choose whether or not to take part in this curriculum, we have the ability to opt students out. We have been so transparent, providing it to the community, giving them time to review it. I mean, I think this is the most transparent we have been with a curriculum in a long time, and this was a huge plea from the community to be transparent in this. And I feel like we have lived up to that, that end of the agreement. Um, so to speak, as far as hearing the community and doing that. Parents, um, guardians, if there's something that you don't like about this curriculum, you have the ability to opt out, be present in your children's education. You are the main stakeholder in your children's upbringing. Um, we put this all out there for you to look over, to be a part of it, it can be integrated into Canvas so that people at Sky Valley can also take bits and pieces that they want to, and they can do this with their kids at home. If you opt out, you still have the ability to choose anything that you like from this curriculum, correct me if I'm wrong, Niall. But choose anything that you want from this curriculum and talk to your student at home using this curriculum that we have provided. Um, or will provide. So we have that option available, but parents, it's there. Read it, look at it, if you don't agree with it, opt out.
Yeah, Director Barnes, the only thing I would add there is that is our goal. Uh, we have to look at the actual licensing right before we can a hundred percent make that guaranteed appearance, but that has been the goal the whole time, is to be able to make this available for families.
Any further discussion? There's a motion.
I got one more point. In terms of the CDC and the state working together, the state ignored the CDC. Uh, I brought up right when the pandemic hit uh, about the depression and the consequences of the lockdown, keeping the schools closed. The state ignored that, so the state is ignorant about many things, multiple things. In fact, I could have a presentation about that in a future board meeting about the mistakes they've made, so that's just a private comment.
Thank you. I will go ahead and restate the motion. Um, there's a motion in a second that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approve the health curriculum. All in favor, raise your hand. All oppose. Agenda item has passed four to one. Moving on to agenda item five point zero two, consideration of resolution number eight dash two zero two-two, is there a motion? I move that the Monroe's Board of Directors approve agenda item five point oh two, consideration of resolution number eight dash twenty twenty-two. Is there a second?
Second.
There is a motion in a second that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approve resolution number eight dash two zero two-two. Discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. The agenda item has passed five to zero. Moving on to agenda item, nah, five point zero three, consideration of human resources report, is there a motion? I move that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approve item number five point oh three, consideration of human resources report. Is there a second?
Second.
There is a motion in a second that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approve the human resources report as presented. Discussion?
I would like to say, there are, in reviewing this HR report, there are some amazing teachers that we are losing that um, a couple especially that I just want to give a shout out to since it is Teacher Appreciation Week. We are losing, um, Marjorie Campbell. Um, we are losing Paola Martinez, she was a dual-language teacher at Frank Wagner that my son Henry was lucky enough to have, she was amazing teacher. Um, we are also losing Jody Urban, who's also another teacher at Frank Wagner, um, who did amazing things with her students. So you will be very missed, we are sad to lose you.
Just a comment, the uh, I know these recommendations allow us to uh, to have not made any changes for the upcoming year. So just a point that was brought up when we were deciding whether we should have a RIF. And this is, this is the reason we are not able that we don't have to go through that step. So I guess just an acknowledgement that as a result of these resignations, so it's kind of a bittersweet. Sad to see them go, but as a result of that, uh, other layoffs don't have to happen.
Further discussion? Okay. All in favor that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approve the human resources report as presented, raise your hand. All oppose, all abstain. The agenda item has passed four to zero dash one. Seems appropriate. Okay, moving on to agenda item, or moving on to the superintendent consent agenda and agenda item six point zero eight, approval of the superintendent consent agenda, is there a motion?
I move that we approve the superintendent consent agenda as presented in the minutes.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion in a second that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approve all items as listed and presented in the superintendent consent agenda dated May ninth, two thousand and twenty-two. All in favor, raise your hand. The agenda item has passed four to zero. Moving on to board consent agenda, seven point zero three, approval of the board consent agenda, is there a motion?
I move that we approve the Monroe School District Board Consent Agenda as presented in the minutes.
Is there a second?
Second.
There is a motion in a second that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approve all items as listed and presented in the board consent agenda dated May ninth, two thousand and twenty-two. Discussion? All in favors? Thank you. All in favor, raise your hand. The agenda item has passed four to zero. Moving on to agenda item eight point zero one, board reports, comments, suggestions, upcoming events. May sixteenth, superintendent chat at five PM. May twentieth through the twenty-first, we have Hidden River Drama Production, and May twenty-third at five PM is the SVEC Tacular Event Arts and Science Fair. Directors, even comment, go ahead, Director Campbell.
Um, it is testing season, so the smarter balance assessment is going on. So uh, for families, make sure your kids are having breakfast. It turns your brain on, and it is also AP, uh, the first two weeks of May, AP tests. Make sure you're getting lots of sleep, lots of water, lots of fluids, you can take your snacks into class and your water with you as well. No, you cannot have your cell phones or other smart devices with you, or your test is invalidated per OSPI. And also would like to just say, as we have a growing diverse population in the Monroe School District, the month of May is Asian American Pacific Islander Heritage Appreciation Month. We like to just honor and thank that diverse, growing population in our community is very valued.
Thank you, Director Campbell. Directors?
Okay, I have a bunch, so I'll get through it as fast as I can. Um, I got to go to the parent hub meeting. I would encourage any of you to go if you have an opportunity. Um, it was, it was really cool to connect with some of our um, team at, at Monroe School District, and I really hope that um, I know that pre-pandemic, it was a meeting place and a gathering place for families. I don't think that that has quite started up yet, or is, is hopefully on its way, but I would just encourage people to go again. When I was there, I had the opportunity to meet with several of our behavioral health team. I took it upon myself and they said that I wouldn't get in trouble if I asked um, for a presentation so that we could learn more about the incredible work that our student advocates and everybody are doing. Uh, I learned a lot, um, I have their contact info, I have one for each of you, if you want a copy. Um, so that was, that was something great. I am excited this weekend to be going to Monroe High School's production of The Addams Family. And then I want to share some news as the, excuse me, as the WIA rep. So um, WIAA had a recent meeting of their representative assembly. There were seven amendments, four of which passed, three which failed. Um, some of the, two of the ones that passed were the uh, state was redistricted from nine districts down to six and modified the WI executive board representation. They also are allowing students to retain the full number of practices previously completed upon return from extended absence. That seemed like something that might impact some of our students. Um, if anybody is interested in the other amendments, let me know, I'm happy to share, but I've got more info and so wanted to share some amazing things that are happening in our district. So eight of our spring sports team at all levels earned the WIA distinguished award for having a team GPA between three point oh and three point four nine. Four of our spring sports teams, all levels, earn the WIA outstanding award for having a team GPA between three point five and four point oh. Distinguished awards went to varsity boys golf, JV boys golf, varsity basketball, C-team, oh, excuse me, varsity baseball, C-team baseball, varsity boys soccer, JV girls tennis, C-team girls tennis, varsity boys track. Outstanding awards went to varsity softball, varsity girls tennis, varsity girls golf, and varsity girls track. Y'all are amazing, congratulations, keep going.
Uh, there are a couple things, so um, celebrate the World Committee. I got to read another book this last week um, that highlighted the Japanese internment camps during World War Two, which I think is a really important thing that we don't talk about often enough. So I was um, really honored to be able to read a book about that and be recorded, it should be coming out soon. The other part, uh, Dan and I got to do a little bit more brainstorming for where we want to take um, celebrate the World Committee in the future and just sort of the things that we're thinking about doing in schools. And it is very, very exciting. I also have been working on getting some funding for library books from an outside source in the community. I'm just working out all of the specific details, but soon we should have some cards available for people who want to shop at a specific place. And a part of those proceeds will go back to the school specifically to fund library books for our district. So especially with what's going on with the levy, I'm very excited um, that we have this generous business within our community that's willing to partner with us and make this happen. So that's kind of what I wanted to share.
Director Whitfield, anything? I'll, I'll, I'll close it up.
Okay.
Well, I got a little report. Uh, I prepared, you know, talking to teachers, speaking to teachers. I don't know how many kids wait for the last minute to work, put something together. But I, I was working on this probably about an hour before the meeting. So I've had a chance to go to almost every school, well, I think to every school, and one of the areas that I had difficulty understanding is uh, with the special ed and IEPs. So the purpose of this presentation is to educate the public in an overview about special education. And by doing this, I'm able to gain the perspective. And one of the things I've, I've learned is if I understand something well enough to be able to talk to Joe Blow, Jane Blow, then, then I know the subject. So first off, when I go through schools, I'm always looking around. I look at lights, I look at floors, I look at paint. And Victor, I'm always evaluating the schools in terms of groundkeeping and technology and what's put up in class, and I have to say that, very proud of the way the school's taken care of. So uh, anyway, you see me looking all around like a little kid when I go through, but I'm looking at that. So what I wanted to give a report on is special education and really, as I said, my idea was to gain a perspective on this, this one facet. School is very complex. In fact, the more I looked into this, the more the overwhelming responsibility hit me. Um, everything that we're responsible for as directors. And by learning about the subject, when we have information that's presented at the board meetings about staffing, about different types of classes, I'll have a better ability to have an understanding of that. So this is my report. Uh, I went with David Perator to all uh, to a group of classes, and we covered everywhere from kindergarten through transitions. So with uh, with high school Frank Wagner, Sky Valley, and Salem Woods, I observed uh, what's called the Student Learning Centers, and this is defined as educational programs for students who require life skill support with multiple disability support. Structured learning centers are offered at the elementary, middle school, and high school. Structured learning centers are offered at the elementary, middle school and high school. Students participate in general education programs for academic, social, adaptive, emotional skill development to the extent determined by their individual educational program, IEP. So I visited the high school and we met with, David and I met with Noah, Noah Wallace, who's the assistant principal. And we first started by going to a group where all the students got together and had a a, a group meeting or a time they were able to get their schedules and just talk in terms of a group. And each student had their own schedule throughout the day and they headed out for their class. And then what we did is we followed a couple of those students in different classes. So by going from the special ed, they went to the general ed. And one of the classes we visited was where a student had autism and he went to an art class. And we talked about the fact that he has this difficulty, but he's able to participate in the class. And by having him there, the students get used to the disability he's confronted with. And he gets to be a part of the population and get to know everybody. So this is part of what Kim was talking about with the inclusive practices. So then I went to, I had a visit to Salem Woods. And I got to observe some areas of speech and pathology and language, which has, which are parts of occupational therapy, therapy, physical therapy and vision therapy. And we went around with Principal Melanie Gray. And I got to observe students with a pair of educators with kids rolling around in their wheelchairs or having more severe physical difficulties and how they were treated and how they were transported and how they acted in the school, in that particular school. Also, the, the student hubs where students with IEPs were a part of the general education population. So the students that were able to participate in a certain, certain types of classes, they were included in that. One of the areas that I've had a lot of curiosity about with this was PBS, which is positive behavioral support. And this program is designed to support students with their social, emotional regulation and behavioral regulation skills in order to enable them to successfully be in their classes and school environment. And I went to Fred, Fred, Frank Wagner. And I met with Deborah Henderson, the assistant principal. And we visited kindergarten classes, which is probably our favorite. Get to see those adorable kids and get to see them playing and learning at specific levels, look at their structured routines and their activities and observed teaching techniques. And then looking at the teaching tools that were available, the toys and the books and how these tools were used for, well, with, with students with specific disabilities. And spoke to teachers and pair educators about how the kids are doing. And people, there's some kids with tremendous disabilities in the school district. And from what I observed, we're teaching them and caring for them and getting their educational needs met at the able, they're able to, the IEP. So I was very proud to see what was happening. And so we went from the kindergartners and then we went to the transitions program. And we went to Sky Valley Education and met with Kathy Bernique. And this is a community-based program that serves students between eighteen and twenty-one who require intensive support and instruction as a transition out of schools and into the community. So we have these kids that may go all the way from kindergarten all the way through the school system and have an opportunity to be in gen ed classes. And then they, they go to the transitions class where they learn home skills and work skills. And the teacher Kathy works with businesses in the community to allow them to, to get jobs. The kids find the interest, they're, the topic or the area they're interested in. And they develop that and then they look for jobs that are, you know, that they can go into in the community. And I found that of the eight kids that are in the transition, six of them are already employed. And some of them work, well, one of them sat Goodwill and another one at Tractor Supply. So for the special ed, we're caring from kindergarten all the way up through twenty-one. We're providing skills and support for students with disabilities and just challenges. And we're just, you know, that's, we're, that's part of the inclusionary aspect that we're working towards, including kids and having them a part of the general education. So by giving you that presentation and having it work together, I'm able to communicate that to, to the public when I speak to them. So thank you for your patience. You've been good, you've been a good class.
Thank you, Director Whitfield. Okay, let me just close out really quickly. I was able to attend Arbor Day at Lake Ty with Mayor Thomas and, and city council and Snohomish County Representatives. It was really neat. But the most important people there by far were Miss Tenny's third graders. They were adorable and they planted a tree and they were just, I mean, it was like the most fun I've had in a long time. And the sun was out and, I mean, it was great. It was great. I think there's pictures. Shout out to the communications department as well because I was scrolling on Facebook and there's just so many good things that are happening in our district. And it's so nice to be able to highlight those and see our students and see them doing really great things. And so shout out to communications, just a couple of updates with the city. Since we are looking at not only developing that relationship, but continuing that relationship because we're Monroe and it's a community and it takes a village. And along with that education and connection piece, there is an opportunity for our directors to participate Memorial Day Weekend. So it would be that Monday, May thirtieth. What's really neat is there is a memorial there. It was from Memorial Day Stadium and they're going to cover some of the history there. So the soldiers who are identified on there were actually Monroe students. And there's thirteen of them and it's a really important opportunity and just a historical event. And I think just really being able to honor our Monroe students who participated and who who gave their lives during World War Two and weren't able to come back home. So just a really important way to honor that. And that again is May thirtieth, that's going to be between seven and nine AM. I will get the, I will confirm the information once we have it. And we're going to have, or they're going to, you're able to speak as elected officials as well. And there's an opportunity there, so I'll send out that information. Just some city updates, Juneteenth Festival, I believe, will be held June eighteenth. Correct, yes. And then it is API month. There's also proclamation for that. And let's see. Oh, and I just wanted to say thank you, Kim, for that DEI highlight. That was really important. And I think I really needed to hear some of those pieces as well, as well, or just be reminded that we're doing really great things for students, for all students. It was also really important for me to hear that we are allocating resources to our middle school and helping support and connect with our community there. So thank you so much for all of that information. With that all said, thank you for, for showing up, directors. Appreciate you. And tonight's meeting is adjourned at eight oh two PM.